We opened our January tenth, 2020 Harwich Board Selectment Meeting at five, six fifteen, rather. Went into executive session in which we discussed a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and conducted collective bargaining sessions with our fire chief. We then have, we're out of the executive session and we're moving now into open session. Let me just remind you that as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans in video auto-taping, taped this meeting, must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Seeing no one so inclined, I'd like to ask you now to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) (inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move to weekly briefing. It's become our standing agenda item. We'll move into the sewer construction, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First is update for Phase Two Contract One, which is the work being conducted by Robert P. Hour. The one-week look ahead for this week of February tenth is the Sewer Crew Number One is continuing the gravity sewer installation on Old Heritage Way, then progressing to Liberty Trail, and then on to Spencer's Trace. Sewer Crew Number Two continues their installation on Route 137, as well as extended work hours setting a deep set sewer manhole, as well as installation of stubs on Continental Drive. Again, the work at 137, still necessitating the detours that are in place. Next week, the week of February seventeenth, Sewer Crew Number One continues the gravity sewer installation on Spencer's Trace. Crew Number Two is remaining on Route 137 and also working on installation on Joanna's Path. And the week of February twenty-fourth, Sewer Crew Number One is gravity sewer installation on Spencer's Trace, then progressing to Somerset Road. And Sewer Crew Number Two continuing their work on Route 137. Again, all work on 137 still necessitates detours. Phase Two Contract Two, which is being done by RJV. Their one-week look ahead for this week of February tenth, they continue to install sewer on Selwest Drive, and their work is requiring road closure between Route 137 and Church Street. In fact, that will be their update for the next three weeks, that they're installing sewer on Selwest Drive, necessitating road closure between Route 137 and Church Street.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for Joe? Anyone in the audience, questions for Joe on where we're going? Okay, we'll move next into public comments.
Kevin Constine, Deputy Chief of Police, and I'm here wearing another hat tonight to talk about Item D on your consent agenda, which is the Harwich Polar Plunge for Special Olympics that we're organizing. So I just want to talk a little bit about that and just give a little background. We've had a tremendous outpouring of support on this and just kind of where we are and how we came to this event. So March fourteenth, eleven AM at Red River Beach, we're going to do a law enforcement torch run, polar plunge. So who was the law enforcement torch run? My other hat is very thrilled to be the law enforcement representative on the executive board for Special Olympics Massachusetts for the law enforcement torch run for Barnstable County. So we got together and said, what can we do as a community event to raise money and awareness for Special Olympics? And we came up with this polar plunge. Wasn't my idea, but we'll be there. Law Enforcement Torch Run is the largest public awareness vehicle and grassroots fundraiser for Special Olympics. Known honorably as the Guardians of Flame, law enforcement members and Special Olympic athletes carry this flame of hope into the opening ceremonies of state, provincial, national, regional, and world games, bringing law enforcement in our communities together. Annually, more than ninety-seven thousand dedicated and compassionate law enforcement members carry this flame of hope, symbolizing courage and celebration of diversity, uniting communities among around the globe. So what we do, L-E-T-R, Law Enforcement Torch Run for Special Olympics engages law enforcement worldwide, championing acceptance and inclusion for people with intellectual disabilities, starting first with their own communities. Over the past years, the torch run has evolved and now encompassed a variety of fundraising platforms to include polar plunges, tippecops, truck pulls, and much more. Since this inception in nineteen eighty-one, law enforcement has raised more than a half of billion dollars and changed a lot of attitudes. In Massachusetts, in the latest numbers we have in two thousand eighteen, we have approximately one thousand officers participating in the law enforcement torch run program. We have over two hundred opportunities to attend for awareness and meddling of athletes. We have a hundred and fifty departments in Massachusetts involved. We have annually seventy-five opportunities, fundraising opportunities around the state. And in two thousand eighteen, just Massachusetts law enforcement alone raised six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars for Special Olympics Massachusetts. And the best thing is, all that money comes back to support local communities. So I appreciate your support in anticipation of this polar plunge and look forward to seeing everybody.
Fantastic. You did read some options that were less drastic than jumping in the cold water, though. I kind of liked the truck pull, as for you.
Yes. We'll work on that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else for weekly public comment? Any announcements?
Should I get up for Dancing Spoons? Or should I wait?
You should wait, I think, that's on the agenda coming up. Okay, if not, we'll move to the consent agenda?
Consent agenda. A, vote to approve and sign the March third, twenty twenty presidential primary warrant. B, vote to approve the resignation of Taylor Mills from the Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee effective immediately. C, vote to approve the resignation of Gabriella R. Parker, telecommunicator for the Harwich Police Department, effective February eighth, twenty twenty. D, vote to approve the Massachusetts Special Olympics/Law Enforcement Torch Run, Harwich Polar Plunge, twenty twenty, March fourteenth, twenty twenty, nine AM to one PM, Red River Beach, East End. E, vote new hawkers and peddler's license for Dancing Spoons' agogo food truck, DBA Dancing Spoons Chef Services.
I'll second.
I got a couple more. F, vote seasonal lodging house or in holder's license renewal, twenty twenty, for Gingerbread House B&amp;B. And G, vote seasonal common victualers license renewal, twenty twenty, for A&amp;W Enterprises, Inc., DBA A&amp;W.
Second again.
Second discussion. If you wish to make a comment, ma'am, if you wish to make a comment, you may.
Yeah, I just wanted to say it's nice to be kind of back in Harwich and around everybody that I know. What I'm doing...
I'm sorry, maybe remind, could you identify yourself for us?
Yes, my name's Lisa Whalen, and I had, you guys probably remember me from having Dancing Spoons over on Parallel Street several years back. But I've continued my business as a caterer and a personal chef over the years, and recently just purchased a food truck. So I'm going to be doing seasonal comfort foods, partially in Harwich at the tech school throughout the winter and the summer months, a few days a week while the construction crews are there. And then also, I'd like to participate in the Cranberry Festival and all the other, you know, the shows and whatever else is going on in the summer. But I just, that's really it. I just wanted to say hello and thanks for considering me for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Michael?
Just a comment. I just want to thank Taylor Mills and Gabriella Parker for their service to the town of Harwich.
Appreciate that. Other discussion? If not, we have a vote in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving next into public hearing. We're joined by the Finance Committee tonight. I see some of them here. Angelo and John, and you want just, and Jack, do you have a, you want to call the order?
It's not really listed there.
(inaudible).
Thank you. Joe, the floor is yours to walk us through this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the Finance Committee. And I don't know if it's appropriate, but I figured I would sit here and face the board to face the music of the budget message that I'm presenting this evening. I also don't know if it's appropriate, but I want to recognize the Finance Director and acknowledge that there's a seat open to my right, but I understand if she remains where she is. Because this is a difficult budget message, quite honestly. However, I'd like to begin my remarks where my budget message memorandum closes, and that is with sincere thanks and gratitude to the Finance Director for the incredible work that she's done in a very short period of time to bring me up to speed on the budget process. And as you'll see in my memorandum, I relied heavily upon the board's goals for two thousand twenty as it relates to financial leadership and stability. And one of those objectives in there is increased transparency and presentation. And I mentioned in my message that that's evidenced by the work that Carol has produced in the book that has been presented to the board this evening and the Finance Committee. It is remarkable work, and it absolutely supports the overall objective of promoting transparency, increased information presentation and all of that. And I'm very excited about the document itself and the way it's laid out.
And Joe, I, excuse me, interrupting, but I assume that this would be on the website?
Yes, we'll get all these, all the documentation onto the website, and as we update as the process goes by, we'll add that to the website as well. But again, my thanks to Carol as Finance Director and as well as to all the department heads. It was, it's a difficult budget. You know, there's no other way to sugarcoat it. I put the, put the directive to the department heads to be able to recommend cuts, knowing that they are always mindful of their core mission, of their departments and their programs. And I asked them to help provide narratives which will be compiled and presented to the board and the Finance Committee in a separate document because their narratives are critical to understand what these, what this budget will do for the departments that have borne the majority of the cuts that are necessary to balance the budget. And I think it's helpful, it was helpful for me to make informed decisions, and I think it'll be helpful for the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee to make informed decisions. Having said that, I want to put it out there that I did fall short on one of my, one of my goals for the department heads. I was endeavoring to meet with every department head that was impacted by significant budget cuts, and I was unable to have conversations with all of the department heads before this public presentment of that. I will still follow up with them, but I want to acknowledge that I fell short of that goal. What you're presented with this evening is a budget that is balanced despite the fact that we had the headwinds of approximately a one-point-eight million dollar deficit. So while this budget is presented to you as balanced, it's not one that I offer with any happiness or joy because of the effects of what you'll see within the budget. As I mentioned, I did focus on the board's goals for two thousand twenty, specifically goal number two, which talks about financial leadership and stability. And within that, I focused on three of the key objectives. The first was the objective to develop a budget which limits growth and operating expenses to no more than two percent and manages debt payments as much as possible to maintain level debt service obligations. You can see the narrative in the memo itself. The second objective is develop a debt budget which avoids the use of capital exclusions, limits the use of debt exclusions, and is within the limits of Proposition Two and a Half without the need for a general override. And finally, to develop new approaches to factually inform potential impacts resulting from budget decisions and provide transparency in town finances. And as I opened up, that's where I think our Finance Director has made tremendous strides in that goal and objective. The negative influences that impacted our budget process this year, obviously, there were salary and wage increases that have been approved and granted over time. Beyond that, there were greater than two percent increases in our various assessments, property and liability insurances. As we've heard many times throughout the fall and early winter, there is significant pressure around the municipal solid waste program and the process, not just here, but across the Commonwealth. And related to all of that, I am using this opportunity to announce that effective immediately, and until further notice, that there is presently a hiring freeze for any positions that were not advertised as of February sixth, twenty twenty, because of the impacts of the fiscal year twenty-one budget. As we go through this process, I did not think that it made sense to advertise what is not yet advertised, and I can speak to that specifically, positions that may be impacted by this budget process. So for the, for the short term, for the time being, we're going to, we're going to hold off on filling those positions. Now, I made the reference to any position that was not advertised as of February sixth, February sixth being the last day to get advertisements into the Chronicle. There is a position at the Cultural Center that that position is not impacted by this hiring freeze because that process was well underway before the budget process. However, I've been advising department heads that are impacted about this going forward. Some of the positive offsets that we had that helped with this budget, for the second year in a row at least, there were no increases in the employee health, dental, and vision plans, and we received that news about a week and a half ago from the county municipal health group, which was very helpful. You heard presentation from Superintendent Sanborn, and we know that there's a reduction in the Cape Cod Tech assessment, which also gave us some breathing room. Within my budget message, you will see that there are several departments that were impacted greatly by budget reductions, and they are the Public Works Department, Building Department, Cemetery, Conservation, Council on Aging, Health, Information Technologies, and Youth Services. There were also cuts made to police and fire, but as you'll read in the budget material, you'll see that their budgets did not get down to the two percent level. And as I write in the message, that was essentially a judgment call by me to make sure that we still have adequate public safety representation through this process. Additionally, and in line with the objective B in your goals, there are only two debt exclusions that are being recommended to go forward. The first is related to the pumper ladder truck known as the Quin for the Fire Department, and the other is in support of the road maintenance plan. That means I'm recommending that we are holding off for the May two thousand twenty annual town meeting and election cycle, that we are holding off on the establishment of a Phase Three, excuse me, Phase Two Contract Three to complete the East Harwich work related to the comprehensive wastewater management plan. And additionally, recommending holding off on doing a vote and a debt exclusion related to the D-H-Y design money. Quite frankly, myself and working with staff, we need to do more work to get us in a more successful position to have those questions prevail. To that end, I've worked with our town clerk, and arrangements have been made, including in the budget, to support a special town meeting and special town election, if we determine that to be feasible for some time, late September, early October. That is the essence of the budget message. What you'll see in front of you is a budget of, the operating budget of sixty-nine million two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-seventeen dollars, which is an increase of point-three-three percent. To achieve our goal of the no more than two percent, it was necessary to effect budget reductions at a greater level and pace. So again, while I'm not happy or pleased with the budget, I am at least gratified to be able to say that the board and the Finance Committee are being presented with a balanced budget for consideration. And then lastly, I would just like to offer that because of the impacts to those departments, as I'll be working on our schedule for the budget presentation on March seventh, I'll be making sure that there is ample time for the impacted departments to plead their case to tell you specifically about the effects on their budget and the process, so that they'll have an opportunity to be heard directly by you and the Finance Committee.
So that's a start. You've given us a huge document. Are you going to go through some of this as well, or?
Well, I can, I can go through the documents. I have to be honest, Mr. Chairman.
I'm hoping you'll go through all of it, but you've hit the high points.
Well...
Is there a chance for us to review this at this point and come back?
Yes, please, thank you.
Carol, you going to handle that?
Would you like me to review this with you just briefly, and then we'll come back and have a further discussion?
And then we'll review it consistently. I remind people, as Joe has inferred, this is the first draft. And so we'll have multiple meetings going forward on working this through. And so we have a lot, you've given us a lot of homework to do, and I would appreciate it. And Joe, thank you for summarizing the high and or low points, however you want to refer to that. But as a board, we put pressure on the town administrator to really tighten up the budget. So I know this is not the most, it's always easier to spend money than it is to save money, so there you go. Carol, if you could give some of the high points, and then we'll do our, we'll do our homework when we come out.
Thank you. I think you'll find that the document that I've put before you this evening is very different than one that you've probably ever seen in the past. It's a new budget module, model that I borrowed from Barnstable. And they don't mind because I spoke to some folks there. And it really is a more concise way to review the budget. For example, if you turn to page two.
Page two?
To provide you an overview of all of the general fund revenue that is estimated for FY twenty-one, what is estimated for FY twenty as well, and then the actual revenue that the town received in fiscal year nineteen. Here it has a concise version of what your levy limit is, how it's calculated, in addition to the other categories of revenue. For example, motor vehicle and boat excise tax are listed here. There's a slight increase that we're estimating for next fiscal year. Hotel motel and meals tax is provided here. I will tell you upfront that we did use the short-term rental to balance this budget, but there is no proposed increase from the four percent to the six percent that's allowed by law. Charges for services is another large category of revenue. Charges for services include disposal fees, golf receipts, harbor receipts, recreation receipts, and ambulance fees. There are other categories here that are listed as special revenue funds. And so these funds help, help support your budget, in so much as the Peg Access Fund completely supports Channel Eighteen's budget. We have betterments here that are, that you collect betterments. You've borrowed the money, the town has borrowed the money in general obligation debt, but then we assess those betterments to individual property owners. And so those go to pay for the debt on those betterments. And then you have Sacquetucket Harbor and Cranberry Valley Golf Course, where it was a decision that was made at previous town meetings, that those, the receipts from those particular categories would help offset the general obligation debt that the town has taken on. So that's another major category. In addition, you have enterprise funds. We calculate an indirect cost for enterprise funds on an annual basis, and that covers administrator costs, treasurer collectors' costs, the finance department, as well as their health insurance, their property tax, their workers' comp. And so we gather those and calculate them on an annual basis and provide, and provide information to the department, have a discussion with the department about how they're calculated, and then come to a final number. Those are included here as a revenue source, as well as free cash. Free cash is being used this year. We've taken a completely different approach to free cash, and so that should be maybe on your mind. And so in speaking with a couple of folks, one was Bob Lawton, he had always taken a different approach, and other communities as well, to how they fund snow and ice. We would like to be able to come to town meeting in May with budget amendments to be able to fund the overage in snow and ice this year instead of using free cash. It's just a different approach. You don't have to agree with it, right? We can change it. Anything can be changed. For FY twenty-one, we're proposing that free cash would go to support sewer operating costs, which are coming online, or expect those to come online in the beginning of the second quarter of FY twenty-one. Detail of that information is in this document as well. In addition to that, we are supporting the purchase of a cruiser for the police department with free cash. That's a one-time expense. It's a capital expense. And then some capital expenses associated with engineering for MS four requirements from the state, and in addition to that, some technology equipment. I believe it was thirty-five thousand dollars in technology equipment. So this is just a general overview of all of the revenue sources. I detailed many of them just in narrative form. I gave you some charts that you can look at, if you like charts. There's always questions that come around with regard to special revenue funds and what's being used. I provided all of that information here as well. There's also been questions with regard to revolving funds in the town. We have twelve revolving funds. So I provided information for each one of those revolving funds for you, in addition to all of the reserves that the town has historically had. I gave you a history from FY ten to FY twenty, and those include free cash, stabilization, and your OPEP fund. So the document here is very different, and if you turn, I'll show you an example, and if you turn the page to page fourteen, and if we look at public safety, this includes fire and police. It serves to provide all of their revenue sources and all of their expenditure categories, whether it's personnel, operating expenses, or capital. But here, on this page, I provided you with employee benefit allocations. So that's an all-in allocation for benefits. And each one of the departments that I analyzed, I provided that same information. So you'll see that I also have a line item that shows debt service for each department. And each department that has debt service associated with them, I provided that as well. You come down to the bottom line where it says total expenditures, including benefits and debt service, you'll see a thirteen-point-eight million dollar figure. Whereas the budget for public safety, all-in for personnel, operating costs, and capital is nine-point-six million dollars. So when we, when you move on to areas where it's been questioned, can you provide us this information? I've provided it for all departments. That includes your large revenue generating departments, which is golf and recreation and harbor. I've laid out information with regard to FTEs, Full-Time Equivalent Employees. I provided that in total. I've provided it by department as well. And then if the department had a, an org chart, I gave you that. Thought you might find that helpful. And so the document is really set out to provide you with that kind of overview information. We certainly have all the details, and we can provide you with all the details. But for starters, I thought you might like this format a little better. If you are curious about allocations, and you have your specs on, there's tiny little writing on page, let me find this, page sixty. And page sixty supports all of the summaries that I provided to you. Page sixty is all of your expense allocations, and they range from, what are your department operations, to, to what are your employee benefits, and then all of their services, such as debt services, education expenses, all of your state assessments, and so forth. And it comes down to a grand total. And it comes down to a grand total that is also in agreement with your general fund summary, which is a good thing, right? The next page shows you revenue sources, taxes to be raised for each department, to support each department. And these are all-in allocations. So these include all of the benefits that are associated with each department. So are we perfect on our benefit allocation? No. We're just starting this process. The process probably, never been done like this here before. So it's going to take us a little while to perfect it. I anticipate over the next couple of years, we'll be honing in on, on all those allocations to just make sure they're absolutely perfect. Some, some of the areas, I had to make a judgment call of how we're going to allocate it. Where, where the cost's going to be allocated based on FTEs, which isn't always great when you have a lot of seasonal folks, because they don't have a lot of benefits. But in some areas, I did have to allocate it based on that, because that was the best information that I had. The last section of the document supports a statistical summary of information. That's the statistical summary or stats section that's in your CAFER, which is a comprehensive annual financial report, and that is located online. And that's for FY '19. I had asked, we have actuary that works with us for OPEB, other post-employment benefit evaluations. I had asked them this year to separate all of those annual required contributions by department. I have that document for you if you'd like to see that. And that's quite a telling document. It was very interesting to, to get at all of that. But for this document, the town is supporting, or we're proposing $150,000 to support OPEB in FY '21. And so the OPEB allocation that you see in those full-on allocations is based on that $150,000. In addition to the $150,000, Water Enterprise Fund funds OPEB $50,000 a year. So that is in addition to the $150,000. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have now or in the future about this document. It's certainly a different way to look at your municipal budget.
Okay. Certainly a lot of work. We very, greatly appreciate it. If you have a lot of questions, I'll open the floor up. Steve, I'll sort your end.
Well, I, I think, just because this is the initial pass at this, one, I want to thank you for trying to adhere to what we set as our goals as a selectmen here in the 2%. And I think that the idea of this transparency, the presentation style, is going to be a lot better for the people of the town. I mean, one of the things we found out very, very clearly in, in our town meeting was a great concern that people had over the overall budget and, and the lack of their ability to truly understand where we were headed as a town. And I think there was a lot of fear that we were headed in a direction that, you know, was going to be very unfavorable to the taxpayers. And while it still is a stressful situation, and I know each department head is, is going to have a tough time, you know, trying to meet what, what Joe and Carol are, are trying to do here for us, we certainly got a clear message from the people who are the voters that, you know, this is something we need to do. So I, this is the outset of this, is the beginning. I look forward to hearing from the department heads, but I want to thank you for trying to answer what was out there as a question from the town as to, you know, where we stand on the budget and where are we headed as a town. So it's more of a thank you for this, but I, also, I'm, I'm looking forward to, you know, discussing each of the departments and their, and their, how they can make this work for them.
Michael?
Really just want to mirror what Stephen said and thank Joe and Carol for all their hard work, and thank all of the department heads for all the sacrifices they made and, and sticking with the budget message. Thank you.
Ed?
Well, from just the brief looking at what I've been able to since I saw this, it has a lot of information to consider. It raises a lot of questions on how, why you made certain decisions or certain allocations the way you did, and we'll discuss that in the future.
Thank you, Ed. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm echoing what Steve said. Someone's got to be the rogue here. Normally, at this point in our, in a year, we, we get engaged in mud wrestling. This is really refreshing. This translates from policy to numbers, and something that I know that I've been interested in for a long time is aligning who owns what expenses, as opposed to just glomming them into a category that the government owns. This, this is really helpful, and it's really refreshing to actually get something that we asked for.
I, of course, agree with that. I, a lot of information. One, one question I, you know, talked about, I was still trying to get straight in my own mind, is enter departmental expenses, so that we can use that as a helping, also guide us on our decision-making. And that's a tough, I know you've worked on it, that's really a tough item to do. And I, and I'm sure it will pain you to not do it in, in accounting every detail. This is going to have to be a broad scope to make it work, otherwise we'll get buried in, we won't see you, we won't see you outside of your office for the next 10 years, so. But we do need to have a feel for that, because when we, when we use resources from one department to another, that's still a cost of that project. Because in the end, we are going to have to, on this budget, we are going to have to go back and make some discussions on if we're doing a, a program and the cost is this, do we want the fees to pay none of it, half of it, three-quarters of percent? You know, that needs to be a reasoned discussion going forward, and, and that's like the next level. But, and, and you've got a lot of information that gets us towards that, so I really appreciate it.
Sure. I, I have another pro, I call it a project that I'm working on that does allocate internal costs. And so, and it does allocate the OPEB ARC, the annual required contribution by department. So that is another project that I am actively working on. And I have, you know, one department that I, that I will be working closely with to make sure we have those allocations tight and complete.
Thank you, Carol. Jack, as Chair of the Finance Committee, do you wish, or you, want to pull your members, do they have, see Bob there, you know, others, questions that, take this opportunity while we have the two cornered in front of us?
Good evening. I'm Jack Brown. I'm presently the Chairman of the Finance Committee. It's our responsibility to evaluate these budgets and to also digest the many, many articles we'll see at some point here in the process. And it's important, I think, for us all to understand that it, it demonstrated just by sitting here tonight, how much hard work it is to put a budget together. And the numbers look daunting. Many of them are. Some of them are just common sense stuff that we need to fund probably, and other ones are long-term costs that are going to be with us for a while to come. And we have to work our way through that together. And our, our meetings occur just about, seems like, every night during, during the early spring. But we, generally speaking, for the public, we meet in this building nearly all the time during the next few months. And if you have questions and you want to talk to FinCom, let, let me know. And hopefully Carol and Joe can answer most of your questions. But give us a, a discussion point, and we'll see what happens.
Okay. Thank you, Jack.
Okay? Anything? Any questions?
Thank you, Jack. Anyone else from the, any questions for Jack or Angel? You have to...
I'm going to stand behind him and...
I just wanted to make a comment. I, I thought the presentation was, was very good and gives us a good basis to work from. And I, I just, unfortunately, I don't have the whole deck that you have, so I'm a little short in a few numbers. I just wanted to make sure, which I think is right, is that they're going back into looking at all of the revenues to make sure that they're at a, a good level, whatever that is, a little supportive level, a good level. And also, the other one, which I think is, and I've always thought was very important, was to have a document for each department that just shows what all their income is and where the money is spent. And particularly important for departments that provide funds to, activities to other departments, like the DPW. They do activities for other departments. They're the ones, if you look at what they're spending, and they're spending that, but it's not for them, it's for somebody else. That has to be moved, so you cannot, that the activity, but just the document, so you know what has to happen, revenue and whatnot. But I think it's a great direction that everybody's going in. Thank you.
Any other comments from the, Linda, please, use the microphone.
Just a question, Linda Sebula. When is this document, because I see nobody else has it, going to be made available to the public? I think the public understands this is a first pass, and there's going to be iterations. But it seems like there was an awful lot of information to absorb, and the public foots the bill. So...
I'll tweet that to Joe, because it's, it's how quick that we can get on the website. Now, it'll go right away.
It'll be presented tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
On the website?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Michael?
And just to point out, we got it tonight as well, when we sat down. So I think they must have finished today, I'm sure.
5:30.
5:30, thank you.
Yeah. So...
So we, we really haven't absorbed anything yet either.
That's why we, I think we keep saying that we'll, we'll have to study and digest this. Leo?
Hi, Leo.
Hi. I just want to draw attention to the, your posting notice for today states that you will be handing out the document at today's meeting. So I understand that it just was finished at 5:30 today, and I understand that you people haven't read it all yet. But there are some of us here that came here this evening specifically because we thought we were going to get a handout. So I don't have a problem waiting until tomorrow when it's online, but I suggest that maybe in the future you do that in your postings then. I'm not sure if that's legal as far as public records laws go, because any documents that you are reviewing in front of you today, even if you got them at the beginning of the meeting, we, the public, can ask for the copy of that, so we can be looking at it while you are looking at it. So I just, I hope...
That was a good point, Mike.
I'll be looking forward online though tomorrow. Thank you.
My only defense is we're not taking any action tonight, but you're a point taken.
I'm just looking at it, talking about it.
Any other comments? I guess my final comment as we go forward on this is, 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 this is different for us, Carol and Joe, and enough, and one important perspective as well, is that through your hard work, we're actually looking at a baseline budget. We'd ask for 2%, no capital. And so we're going to have discussions if, if we can hold to that. That's a whole different look than when we go in with exaggerated budget, and after the fact, try to lower the numbers, which always tends to be impossible to do. So you've really started us off in a good, a good spot to have a good discussion. And we, I think we all, we all appreciate that.
John Shurey.
Pardon?
John Shurey had his hand up.
We did? John? John, did you wish? I'm sorry, you didn't.
I just wanted to make a point. I can't say.
John Shurey, member of the Finance Committee. It's just a very minor, minor comment. It's a great start on the budget presentation. The numbers, I'm looking forward to the packet, as Leo mentioned also. I'd also like to ask a question, if it hasn't been thought of, Carol or Joe, on capital requests and the status of those capital requests, both in the operation department and in the warrant article, capital request. I'd like to see a list of past articles that have been approved, their status of where they stand as far as being fulfilled, and what's the plan going forward on capital requests that have not been? I know of a couple that haven't been even started for two years, that have been approved but not spent, or even out, out to bid yet.
John, if I may, Joe and Griffin, and I think Carol's been working on the list of RFPs and procurement of the status of those, because you're right, we'd fallen behind. That's in, was in, I think, is it last week's budget, Joe, that was in?
The procurement update, correct, yep.
An update of that, where all those, where they are in the articles and where they stand. So, so let me refer to that document. That would probably answer a lot of your questions. Not all of them, but a lot of them.
And, and I realize we're in a bit of a transitional here with, with town, new town administrators and searches for town administrators, so I understand that. Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John's actually really on to something, and this is something we've been discussing at least for a year, probably more than that. When you have, it's not just that the project's not done, but there's this vague feeling that's the lapse of time over one year, two years, that there's this assumption by the time you roll into the next town meeting, that the tax bill I'm getting has pretty much covered everything that I've already agreed to. And moving forward, it's, we're taking on new debt. He's right. I mean, we need to be able to catch up to what we've accrued as an obligation to do stuff, so that people don't get beguiled into believing that they, they're up and even, and anything they do from now on is going to be an additional tax, but they've already covered what they've borrowed. Because that's not the truth, and that hasn't been the truth for quite some time.
A good point. And Carol has been putting together debt structures to try to handle some of those questions, but we'll work on those.
Those debt schedules are in this document.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, again, we all appreciate for the amount of work, and we'll get the packet on the, on the web.
Thanks, Joe. Let's go.
Moving next to new business. Joe Hurd back. I think Robin, you might go ahead and start us on this anyway.
Hi, Robin Kelly. I'm Cemetery Administrator. The mission of the Aboritem at Island Pond is to encourage, educate, and enrich the lives of our constituents in order to enable them to become better stewards of our local history and environment. The Cemetery Commission has been working in with collaboration with the Conservation Agent, the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School Horticultural Students, One More Regional Schools, Cape Cod Cooperative Extension, Bird Watchers, AmeriCorps Cape Cod, local historians to create the Island Pond Aboritem. The Aboritem will provide exceptional opportunities for teaching, research, and outreach. It will be a destination for learning across Cape Cod. You're never too young or too old to learn. The Aboritem will cultivate residents and students who value our natural resources and who will desire to learn how to recognize their impact on the world around them, and become better equipped with skills, knowledge, and abilities to achieve in the fields of sustainability, conservation, and environmental science. Hands-on outdoor learning experiences in our environment, these real-world opportunities for discovery excite and motivate our young students interested in 21st century careers in science, technology, reading, engineering, arts, and mathematics. The Aboritem will be hosting walk-in tours, scavenger hunts on trees in, on our prominent residents who are buried at Island Pond Cemetery. This vision will leverage the town of Howard's unique history with our environment, and will inspire those to visit the Aboritem property. For those of us who are lucky enough to know Jimmy Marseline knows that he truly embodies all the elements of this project, the Cemetery Commission is recommending that the Aboritem be named the James G. Marseline Aboritem at Island Pond.
Okay. I see we have some folks in the audience that may want to comment on this as well.
Thank you. Well, it's no secret that Jimmy was a very good personal friend of mine. And I first want to say, I think it's a very smart move for the town to have a policy that prior to moving forward on either naming buildings or parks or anything like that for their residents, that they wait at least a year after passing. It's been a very difficult year for me personally. Again, it's no secret that Jimmy was a very, very close personal friend of mine. I think the action that's being asked the Board today is a, a really good move, and I hope you do support it. I showed up, and I'm sure there are other members of Jimmy's family and friends here that want you to know that this is not just a request coming from the Cemetery Commissioners, although they voted it. They have been approached by people like myself and residents here in town to ask them to do this. And I just ditto everything that was said. I think it's an excellent project, and it certainly stands for everything that my friend Jimmy stood for as far as education, which is really key, learning and about the environment, and maintaining and keeping the environment. And quite frankly, he, he loved our cemeteries. I mean, everyone who knows him knows he was there on at least a weekly basis, cleaning and taking care of, you know, his wife's plot that was, was there before him, and has put the onus on me and a number of his friends to make sure his is continued to be kept nice and clean. So I just ask you to please consider this, and hopefully we can move forward.
Excuse me, Leo, before you leave, so you're suggesting that, and I think we're, we're, I don't want to speak for anyone, I guess, but you're suggesting that even though the policy's one year, this merits moving ahead. one year, this merits moving ahead on it because of.
Well, it's been a year. Jimmy's been, Jimmy's, it's been a year. It absolutely has been. And the reason why, I think it's believed, what?
Two years.
Been two years. It's been, the reason why I believe, and I don't want to speak for the Cemetery Commissioners, but I believe the reason why they are asking for it and want to move forward with it quickly is because of the different grants and things that are going to be applied for, and it's always nice to have everything in place as far as the naming of it and all that. So as we move forward, we don't have to go back and change grants or change anything that's been given to us when we, when we establish it from day one. So, and again, I don't want to speak for the Commission, but I believe that's why there's a little bit of hurry to have it done this evening, but it's not, it's not the year thing that's well over.
So I lost track of time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Don, just to, before it comes up, this in no ways interferes with us putting pressure on Cape Cod Tech to name.
Well, I look forward to slapping him around every year he comes in, and he doesn't name something in the school after Jimmy, but this is terrific.
Any other comments? Don?
Yeah, I just want to say that this is a proud day in the history of Harwich, who we accept this. This guy was an amazing human being.
Entertaining motion?
Mr. Chair. I move that we approve the request from the Harwich Cemetery Commission that Island Pond Arboretum be named the James Marsaline Arboretum at Island Pond.
Second.
Effective.
No, no, no. Next item, no. Okay.
Immediately.
Okay, so moved and seconded. No more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for everyone who came tonight, and Robin for putting this together.
Thank you, Robin.
Ed?
Leo's comments about Jimmy's care in the cemetery, I can remember cup several summers ago, it was particularly hot, dry summer, and I remember watching not only Jimmy being in the cemeteries taking care of that things were spuced up, but also at Brooks Park, the little veterans' flagpole installation that he planted petunias at. He showed up every day with his watering can in the back of his truck to make sure those flowers kept honoring our veterans.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may just respond to that, I just want people to know that that particular memorial that you're talking about is for the Battle of the Bulge, and Jimmy was a POW in the Battle of the Bulge, and we have some people that have been continuing his efforts and keeping that and maintaining it. But thank you for mentioning that, Mr. McRennis.
Don, you wish to?
We need to motion. You're floating.
Move all in favor. We have a vote, all in favor?
We already did.
We already did that, okay. Don, you want to have a second motion?
No, this is for the next item.
Oh, okay.
If you move on.
Next item is, we need to extend Joe Powers as temporary town minister for another ninety days to carry us through. Don?
I move to designate Joseph F. Powers as temporary town administrator for a period not to exceed ninety days effective two eighteen twenty.
Second.
Ed?
In, in the charter, is it the language temporary or acting?
It's actually acting. You have it listed here this way.
Yeah, okay.
I think we've been using it interchangeably. I'd be happy to change the motion to acting if you'd like.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Next on the agenda is a couple items from the Board of Health that they voted on actually several months ago, and I, I lost track of it. But one is, is to, as the regulation stands now, once the main sewer line is in place, those of us who have, that are in that area are given one year to connect to the sewer line. Their motion on this was to extend that to two years timeframe to, for us to connect to the sewer line. Chatham has done that as well. The primary reason, quite frankly, is, is that there's a lot of sewer going in between Harwich and Chatham and neighboring communities, and the feeling, I think, from both of our towns is that one year was too rushed to get the work done. And so that, that's their first recommendation, I'd like a motion to, and then there's a second one. Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to remind everybody, too, that we're acting as the, until it's built, we're the sewer authority for things that haven't been built yet.
Right. That's a good point. As, as the selectmen, we're in charge of informing the CWMP, once the lines are in the, once the line is in the ground, construction is done, we then turn it over to the wastewater water commission to, to handle that.
In reading the IMA, it appears to allow this, but I'm going to make a conditional motion that we increase, move that we increase the timeline for mandatory connection to the municipal sewer system for one year to two years, contingent upon legal counsel's concurrence that the agreement affords for that.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? Ed?
As I remember in past discussion of this, and actually the second one that is that these, I'm happy to vote to approve them, but these are both areas which are in the jurisdiction of the Board of Health solely, and we're just sort of icing on the cake.
No, it's not. It's our responsibility as wastewater commissioners, the Board of Health recommended to us, and that's the way, way their memo is written. We have, we're the ones that are the enforcement body to move ahead.
Okay, all right.
Michael?
Well, and further, I think the IMA is actually a very important document. That's an agreement we have, a legal agreement we have with the town of Chatham, so I would agree with Don that we need to look at that.
And, Mr. Chair, if I might, there's so much concern over, I mean, you heard the budget presentation, and thank God, that is a message that we're sending back to the public that we're listening. But the second thing is that there's a lot of fear and angst about what people are going to be pushed into and how quickly. I think it's important for us to vote this, just to make sure that they all understand, we hear them, we're going to give you as much time as we can, and we're also going to try to cut the cost of hooking up with the next motion.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, the second one is kind of in the same category. This has been a detailed discussion some time whether we would allow sanitary design, registered sanitariums to design the connection or a design engineer. Chatham requires a design engineer. Quite frankly, we've had some different feedback from Chatham. I've talked to their engineer, or their Bob Duncanson, the person in charge there, and his response to me was that he doesn't think the IMA is, that we've signed, that says we stay in line with Chatham, is that detailed, that would force us to use a design engineer. As long as we have comfort that our Board of Health will check the design, you know, the drawings. There's some other opinion on that. What I'm looking forward to tonight of agreement is, is to move ahead with this as a condition to get a final reading from our lawyer, our legal team, because I think it does, and it sends a message, it's been an item that we've been asked to look at for some time. Think it's important for us to take a proactive step to force the issue on it.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, and this, the motivation behind this is an opportunity to potentially save.
Potentially save money.
A lot of money.
For, for the individuals that are.
Right. Don?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion and a comment on that, that we support the recommendation of the Board of Health to include registered sanitariums as designers for sewer connections that are proposed a discharge of less than two thousand gallons per day, consist, assuming we get confirmation from legal counsel that it's consistent with the IMA.
Second.
Second. Is any more discussion?
Yeah. The one thing, it addresses what Steve says, and it's a very good point. It's not only a lot cheaper than having an engineer come in, but, I mean, my view in this is, there's no downside for Chatham. There's not a single pipe that this would affect that Chatham owns. The risk, it would accrue to the town of Harwich, and assuming there is no risk, which would, you know, that it's minimized, it's a question of trying to cut a break to the homeowners who have to hook up these lines. There's no real reason why an extra piece of paper would make a better connection. There are a lot of sanitarians who are really professional at this and know exactly what to do.
This is also a recommendation to us from the Board of Health.
Right.
For us to take action on. So any discussion from any of the audience on these? If not, we have more. Ed?
Well, this is something that I, I've recommended we move ahead on for quite some time. I do know that, you know, this, the issue of requiring an engineer, in my mind, seemed to add just extra cost on the level of expertise that wasn't required, and I'm not exactly entirely conversant with what the training and of sanitariums are, but quite honestly, the waste lines inside a, a house are designed and installed by a plumber. As it passes through the foundation, it's still just plumbing, and it still runs downhill. And why we need to have a special, presumably more expensive class of people other than a plumber to install it, I don't know. In many states, my, my home state, all of this work would have been specified and done by a plumber.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass. Thank you. Next is discussion on Chapter Ninety projects, and Joe, are you or Link, who's going to handle this for us?
DBW Director will present to that, and I believe it's in the signature file for all of you.
Good evening, Link Hooper, DBW Director. Thank you, Ms. Chair. You have before you for your consideration a Chapter Ninety project request in the amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. The work under this would be accomplished by Robby Hour Company under a contract the Board awarded, I believe, last October.
Okay. Michael?
I move that we approve the Chapter Ninety project request for drainage installation at various locations in the amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? If not, Link, you came, we already had a pretty complete package on this, so thank you for bringing it back to us.
Yeah. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you now.
We have nothing to discuss, Joe, on contracts tonight, so I gave you the next item on the business is update the town administrative search timeline. Last, the, the one I brought to you initially was, you folks all rejected it as being too aggressive, and it was a good rejection. This has come back with a little more reasonable timeframe, hopefully, hopefully that, I credit Bob Lawton with his expertise and some reasonable timelines, and we're moving on this, so we all need an action on this. I think right now I just want to do, unless there's an objection, just mainly informational.
Good.
Okay? That's pretty quiet. So Joe, we'll move next to, excuse me, Don, has offered to give us an update on the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, when we reformed, I became Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. This is just a baseline thing, it's not going to take long. Looking at where we'd gone and how quickly we had gone to places that we weren't even totally familiar on the Affordable Housing Trust itself about the narrative, decided to step back and start all over again organically and get people involved who should be involved. And we've got a consultant now, J. M. Goldson, that's coming in to do workshops rather than just throwing designs against the wall to see if they stick. Now, as part of this process, we met with the Housing Committee this past Thursday, and that was taped, and the consultants are looking at that. And I'm asking you, each of the members here, we are looking to identify stakeholders, and I'm really looking to try to get outside of the box. We've already determined, and rightly, that the HJT would be a potential stakeholder because one of the projects we're looking at would be a mixed-use project with them remaining on site and the housing being developed behind that. He had presupposed that the Harwich Center Initiative might be a stakeholder because people will be walking around if they live in town. It might afford the possibility of more housing for workers in those areas, so that would, they would definitely qualify. All regulatory boards, because we feel like Board of Health, ZBA, Planning Board should have input because they have unique things that they have to deal with, with housing. But I remember, this goes back to an elemental statement from Bob Murray when we were talking about it, that if you get the money and you start spending it on studies and you don't do anything other than study, 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 you never build anything and nobody's going to move in anywhere. So at the very beginning, we want to identify who's interested in this process and who we should call in, because there are going to be various workshops that are going to be broken down. And I had pitched that all the providers should be there as stakeholders, too, because they may have unique challenges that hack, hash, habitat, CDP, you know, what challenges are they facing in other towns or in Harwich that need to be overcome? So think as broadly as possible, and just try to get back to me so that I can feed that information to the consultants so that they could start. And I would, I would suggest that the Board of Select is also a stakeholder. And that's pretty much it. We're meeting again on Thursday, taking them on a tour of some of the affordable housing stock, the people that we have as our consultants, to show them what we have been successful at, and then we're going to have at it. There'll be workshops over the next two or three months.
Good. Thank you, Don. We have a work cut out for us then to move this forward. Any other comments on that? Because, you know, you can pull things out of here, like the YMCA, they're talking about coming down with something, and they're, that's what.
And that's the point. This isn't an I thing, this is an us thing.
There's many things that we can get into the mix, we'll strengthen that, right? Thank you, Don. Town Ministry reports. Joe, you remind us again of our budget timeline?
So with the presentation.
Wish, excuse me, Joe, just for everyone in the audience, he keeps us on a whiteboard in his office, too, so, just now it does, he's beating up on, he actually has it there, too, so, well, excuse me.
You're not supposed to pull the curtain back. Because the budget and budget message have been presented in accordance with the requirements of the Charter, the next two items, this Friday, February fourteenth, is the deadline for article submissions. The warrant closes at noon time. Related to that, we'll have a draft vetted this week by council, so that on our, your meeting next week on Tuesday, the eighteenth, will be the first draft presentation of the annual town meeting warrant.
Okay.
And then the only other item I have for town administrator report, Mr. Chairman, is just to advise the board, as we've talked before about procurements and contracts, I do want to advise the board that I signed a contract today relative to the cemetery. It was for repairs to memorial stones that were damaged over the summertime. The dollar amount for that was under twenty-five thousand, it was eighteen thousand, five hundred. I did execute that today, but I will present it to the board in your packet next week.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Joe. So we'll go to the Select reports. Michael, I'll start in the middle of this time.
I have none.
Ed?
Nope.
Don?
Nope.
Steve?
I think I would say something. With our Finance Committee, or at least certainly number of members of the Finance Committee here, and looking into the camera, emphasized to everybody, which I had said, that these folks are going to spend an enormous amount of time over the next several months pulling together the budget and getting prepared for our, our town meeting. And I would emphasize to everyone that they should recognize what these people do, they volunteer for us, and if they have concerns about the budget, and if they're going to speak on town meeting floor, they should, they should come to at least a few of those meetings and try very hard to understand what these folks are trying to do, as we are, as a board and as Joe and Carol presented tonight, and be part of it, and not just an outsider. Be part of what's going on with your town. So I want to thank those guys for, and ladies for all the work they've done on the, on the committee, so.
Could use two more members.
I'll call my brother.
Yeah, do you know someone who might influence that?
Let me just repeat that, because my, because the chair was not on the microphone. They need two more members in the Finance Committee. Important committee.
Steven's going to call his brother.
Sunday dinner.
The moderator.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Thank you.